54, and we're going to go ahead and start the committee of the whole. Roll call, please, deputy clerk.
Alderman Guzman, absent. Alderman Martinez.
You.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner. Okay. Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Madam Mayor.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes from September 16th, 2024? I need a first and a second.
Some of.
Second. Alderman Newsome. Alderman Donenworth was the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being no one will go on to old business, which is the further discussion of the revenue allocation plan, which is what we term as RAP. So last time, we talked about this. I talked about two of the buckets that we talked about briefly. One was to risk management, which would come out to, I believe it's around $5,500. And one for, we called it economic development, it's really infrastructure money for the downtown area. And that would also be $5,500. Am I right on that? Okay, I'm sorry. Sheri, you want to clarify that? I can't remember the exact amount.
It'd be millions, Mayor.
What did I say?
Thousand.
Oh, yeah. I meant million, but, you know, I like the fact that we said thousands, that, okay. Okay. I hear that, now again, I'm only hearing thirdhand, so I don't know. People were okay with the risk management money. Is that correct? Okay. But not okay with the infrastructure money for downtown. And then there were some other questions about assigning the money down the road for years on end. And I will just mention that I want to be a little careful about going too far down the road because, number one, we don't know, once the permanent casino goes in, how long they're looking at before they would buy that property permanently. And two, we have a lot of potential changes coming up here that could affect the money that we have. We have not raised the tax levy this year, but some things that are coming up on the horizon is we have, since we have switched garbage companies, we have found that we are servicing at least 1,800 people more than we have been up to this point. Why we are funding pensions, and we funded more than we have traditionally, we still need to make greater strides in funding our pensions. Do you by chance, Kelly, have the list of, oh, grocery tax will be one that in January we will lose? That'll be about 1.6 to $2 million.
Does that take effect in '26?
Takes effect in '25, I believe, right, Kelly?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six, right? Yeah, it takes effect in '26.
Yes, but we have to make the decision on it before the, no, '25, right?
Yes.
It is '25.
You have to make the decision in '25.
Yes, sorry. You have to make the decision in '25. So what the state has decided is they have taken away their tax for groceries, but the municipalities can do what they want, which is about 1%, which comes out for us because it's groceries, it's not just grocery stores, it's Walmart, it's Target that sell groceries. Now, like I said, it's between 1.6 and 2 million. We can decide at a later point what most people are, what most municipalities are doing that I learned at the IML conference. Most of them are waiting until after May 1st to decide on that. Between April 1st and May 1st is when they're deciding, depending on their budgets, and they will decide that at that time. But that could be a potential income loss for us if we don't keep the 1%. The state is allowing you to still do the 1% if you would like to, but they're not doing their portion.
When does the state's little tax stop?
It hasn't stopped yet.
Mayor, what is the, what is the state taking out currently?
I know we get 1% and...
I don't know what the state's...
I'm sorry, can you speak in the mic?
Sean, do you know?
For sales tax?
For groceries.
Sales tax for state and municipal. I know there's...
Grocery tax is just the 1%. Sales tax is completely separate.
No, but what does the state portion of that grocery tax money, is that another 1% or is it 1.5?
I would have to check on that, but for, at least for the city of Waukegan, the portion that we care about is that 1%.
Is that the max that we can do, 1%? As a city?
Yeah.
Max?
On that. Now, other options you have is if you wanted to not have the sales tax, you could raise the home rural sales tax across the board by like a percentage point. And there's pros and cons of whatever you do. Some of you have been up here long enough to know that when we have raised the home rural sales tax, that angers business people. When you change the grocery tax, people will be angry, well, I'm getting a break from the state, why am I not getting a break from the municipality? But one way or the other, we still need to bring in a certain amount of income. So those are decisions you're going to have to make down the road.
Excuse me, I have to answer.
Some of the other things that Don was talking about...
So Mayor, just to remind everybody, and this is from the slide presentation that my colleague Stuart Weiss made some time back, and I think I was here once making the presentation. We had, some of the challenges, aside from the pension funding and the insurance premiums or workers' compensation claims, salary increases, lead service line removal mandates, which is 125 million. There's going to be other environmental mandates perhaps coming forward. And then you have technology cybersecurity at 9.3 million over the next five years, 2.8 million implementation costs, and that was for four-year, 2024. And then, of course, we have our fixed asset replacements and our current city infrastructure that needs to be maintained and repaired. Not to mention police and fire stations. Those are capital expenditures. Engineer Jesus has a whole list of capital plans that, for current infrastructure that needs to be modified, replaced, including water and sewer lines. He's spoken at length about that. So there's no end and a whole host of projects and challenges ahead for the city from a financial perspective.
I have a question. So the other thing is that, you know, right now, we have the social workers through the police department. That is a grant. That could end. They decide not to renew that, that's money we'd have to pick up if we still wanted them. We have some fire on the Safer Grant. That would, you know, eventually, we have to pick up those costs. So there's a lot of costs still out there, and we have to determine, you know, these are things that need to be in the budget, and we have to decide how we want to spend it. Do we want to save it? Do we want to spend it? What do we want to do? So...
Excuse me, Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
Can you echo again, how many more are, when it comes to services garbage, how many more are we serving?
Now, we know of about 1,800. We do not have a total count on that. That's what we're spending the next year doing. So one of the things that we did not expect is when we changed to LRS, there were people that were, when the old garbage service had like advanced disposal, or I'm sorry, waste management, then they had advanced disposal garbage cans, and before that, they had, was it Groot?
Viola.
Viola. So there were various cans throughout the city that were never picked up. We don't know who picked them up, but now that we're all on LRS, we're finding that we are picking up far more garbage than we had anticipated in our contract.
And there's more items to the Don...
Yeah, and there's a couple more items that Kelly will...
So Director Don Schultz had mentioned a couple more things that have just popped up in terms of potential expenditures coming over the next couple of years. He reports that, just so you can put some real numbers behind this, the city can expect to experience a loss of approximately 1.7 million with the elimination of the grocery tax. And that's if, again, the city does not adopt its own 1% grocery tax. He reports that according to the Illinois Municipal League and the Illinois Department of Revenue, the personal property replacement tax collected from corporations is slated for a 30% reduction. Over the past few years, the city has received replacement taxes far greater than their historical trend. The reason for the overage was due to the state's incorrect estimates of collections and refunds, and Waukegan may be looking at a reduction of about 1.5 to 2 million.
These are some of the reasons that we've explained in the past why the year '26, '27 budget will be much, much harder to do because there's a lot of unknowns out there right now. So like I said, these are things that we're finding. I can't tell you for sure on a total number on garbage. So far, Public Works and Shannon and I worked on numbers, and we see around 1,800, but we're anticipating it could be as high as 2,200. And we want to make sure we have an accurate number before we, you know, start addressing that.
Are these households or are they part of the unit?
They're, Chris, you want to come on up? They're apartments, they're duplexes. You know, one of the things we're looking at is, are there people living in homes that now have garbage service that really don't have the right to be in those homes?
And that is correct. It's apartments and duplexes.
Anything, anything more than three units, aren't they supposed to have their own service?
My team member, she has all of that information.
Who does?
Shannon.
Shannon.
So she has all of that information.
Yes, that is true, but we're finding that there's probably a few of those issues, but most of it is that there seems to be, in some of these duplexes, there seems to be more people in the duplexes than what is anticipated. So they're using more garbage service.
Correct.
And that's not to mention...
They have more cans.
Yes.
There were a number of, excuse me, there were a number of duplexes that weren't registered. They weren't on the list as duplexes, and we were finding, when we switched out the cans, that's when we started finding out a lot of these folks had never had cans because they weren't known to be duplexes, right? Remember that?
Yep, and we've corrected those, but there's still so many more. And it's whether or not they're registered, whether or not they're renting out a basement apartment that we're not aware of. There's a lot of other issues here that we need some time to investigate to see exactly what's causing that massive increase. And how big is that increase? Is it just the 1,800? Or we honestly suspect that it's more than that? So...
The question, is that 1,800 more units or cans? Because I know that, I'm not sure if in the past, a resident, if they had a lot of garbage, they can ask for extra garbage cans. So instead of having a garbage can and a recyclable bin, they now have two garbage cans and a recyclable. So are they paying for that or are we counting that as one unit or two garbage cans or how are we doing that?
That would still be one unit because they can actually get extra cans, but this is more than that. This is like more people in the units than what we anticipated.
So are we looking at weight in terms of how much more trash we have? Is that what we're looking at?
No.
Cans.
Cans?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that's not counting the pickup that we're doing from people who are dropping garbage off at our beach, bringing pickup trucks and dropping garbage off at our beach and filling all our garbage cans and dumpsters. So that's happening at least a couple times a month, right?
Periodically.
Yep. So...
And then real quick on those garbage cans. If you have a large family and house, and they're only giving you a garbage can and a recycle bin, can you request another garbage can and recycle bin?
Correct. You can. You can request it. It's a good chance they're going to charge you for it, though.
Pretty minimal, though. Like, isn't it like $5 a month or 20? It's real...
Something of that nature, yeah.
It's real minimal.
It's real minimal, yes.
Okay, so, all right, yeah, basically, I have a neighbor that has a rather large family, and the cans don't work, and they were told that they couldn't get another can. So what I will do is I'll try to have them call again and see what they can do.
Yes.
Mayor, you have Alderman Hayes?
I'm sorry, Alderman Hayes?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The 1,800, or, excuse me, the 1,800 garbage bins that need to be collected that we didn't previously anticipate, any idea how much that will cost?
We did do an estimate, I can't remember because we're not, it's only kind of a guideline because we really think it's over 1,800.
Yeah, we're still working on it.
Okay.
We're still working on a final number of what that is.
Okay.
Alderman Florian? In the previous, or early in your explanation, you talked about the home rule tax. What exactly do you mean by that? That's your sales tax. Okay, all right, I just... Phrase, our sales tax, and we've done it maybe by, I don't know if you were an Alderman when we did it one time, but I know Alderman Newsome and I were Aldermen when we've done it. And, you know, ultimately, you will get business owners that will complain about it because it puts an added tax on their, like, if you come in for a meal, it adds, you know, an extra 0.25% or whatever. So there's no clear-cut, solid answer. But these are things that we're going to have to look into because you still have to raise a certain amount of dollars if you want to make your bills. And it's not all done through property taxes. So with that, I'm open to discussion... Oh, I'm sorry, Sheri and Sean, you have some slides, right?
Correct.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're going to present to you some updated numbers that Don came up with for the revenue allocation plan. Next slide, please. Just to remind everyone, we're only referring to the funding sources that are listed on the PowerPoint. So cannabis tax, gaming and admission tax from the American Place Casino, the land lease and the land purchase, which currently hasn't been purchased yet, so there's no funding available for that. Next slide, please. So in fiscal year '23, we received just under 1.4 million in revenues from the gaming and admissions tax and the land lease. And then in fiscal year '24, we received 7.5 million dollars, for a total of 8.9 million. Next slide, please. This shows a summary of the amounts we received in fiscal year '23 and '24, the 8.9 million that was on the previous slide. And then it also shows what we've received this fiscal year to date as of August 31st, 2024, which is 7.5 million, which gives you your total of 11.7 million. Next slide, please. And again, these are just the potential uses that you all went over earlier. And if you have any questions, the amazing directors in the back will be happy to answer them for you.
Don, Sheri, put them up. So again, you know, when I termed this economic development, it was more about infrastructure for economic development. It wasn't truly economic development. But, Noel, I'm going to have you come up and talk a little bit about economic development because I think there's people who don't really understand economic development and how important it is to do economic development, so...
I don't think there's anybody who actually understands every aspect of economic development, myself included. There are a lot of nuances, it's very, it's a very abstract concept. So to some people, that economic development is getting a new business in. Getting Starbucks to come to Waukegan years ago was a big economic development goal. Now we have several of them, right? Some of it is growing small businesses, some of it is helping large businesses expand or stay. Some of it is preparing infrastructure so that it's an inviting place to be, both for the business and for the customer. So in a retail environment, the reason that we talked about Genesee Street as an economic development-based infrastructure project is that's our retail downtown, and we want to reinvigorate the properties there. We want the property owners to invest in the properties that need upgrading and improvements. And part of how we motivate that is to have appealing infrastructure. But rather than just doing the surface infrastructure where we know that there's stuff underneath the ground that needs to be addressed, and we believe that there are things that we don't know about that are underneath the ground, like in some cases, some of you may be familiar with some of the old coal vaults that are under the sidewalks in the downtown. So we know where some of those are, we also know that there are probably some that we don't know about. So, you know, taking out the bricks in the sidewalks, getting underground, we have to do the lead service lines. Any infrastructure project we're doing, we need to do the lead service. That's not only a priority for us, but a mandate. So we need to do that. We need to do repairs or improvements or replacements of water infrastructure, storm sewer, sanitary sewer. We know that there are some parts of downtown where the electrical wiring is not in conduit. Electrical wiring should be in conduit. So we need to put the conduit in. We have a one-dig policy from several years ago that we put in conduit for future fiber or other infrastructure that may be needed in the future. So to put that conduit in so that when we run fiber there, it's already there, nobody has to dig anything up, you just pull the wires through the existing conduit. So those are all important investments. Plus then on top of that, putting the bricks back, making sure everything's level and safe so that it's ADA accessible, it looks nice, it's in good condition. And then going forward, maintaining that in that condition. So we talked about it as an economic development project even though in its physical action, it's an infrastructure project. It's economic development because we're beautifying our downtown. And so that motivates business owners to, or property owners, to improve the properties, and it makes it more inviting for businesses to come to downtown and for customers to want to come and spend money and spend time in downtown. So that's sort of the cross between those projects. But ultimately, in terms of what you would be approving for that, it's an infrastructure project. It's underground infrastructure, it's surface infrastructure. So whether or not there's an economic development purpose, it's still an infrastructure project.
I have a question. Any questions? Alderman Bolton? Alderman Bolton?
Yes, can you elaborate how all this involves the TIF? Bring any clarification to that?
So the downtown is in a TIF district, it's TIF number eight, which is our downtown and harbor front TIF district. TIF money can be used for public infrastructure projects. There isn't enough money in that, the money that's in that TIF currently is allocated for other projects for the most part. There isn't enough money in the immediate current time or in the near future to take on that entire project, which is why we looked at the extra revenue as a source of funding for that. But generally speaking, in public infrastructure is TIF-eligible, which is why we're using some of our existing TIF money to do improvements to our parking garage. We have some repairs that we need to make, and that's a public infrastructure project in the downtown. So we can use resources from TIF eight to pay for that work.
Thank you.
Yes. Mayor? Alderman Florian? Is there any chance we could apply for any grants for any of this, do you think? Like for, you know, aging community, basically restructuring, infrastructure, blah blah? Because isn't there a whole lot of federal dollars available for infrastructure right now?
Some, yes. This is a challenging project for that because it involves so many layers of infrastructure, and we haven't had success in identifying a grant that's big enough for this particular project out of one pool.
That was one of the things we talked about, about you can't grant your way to success because grants are usually specific for certain things, but when you have an overall big project, they will help with a certain part of that, but not necessarily everything that we need at one time. You know, it's kind of like when I talked about this project, I talked about starting it at Grand and Genesee. And I know some people were like, well, that's because you favor the theater. That's not it at all. But they're going to be starting bridge work at the other end of Genesee. So why would you compete at the same time they're doing everything? So it's still going to take a lot of money to do this kind of project. Like I said, when you're talking about 5.5 million dollars, to us up here, 5.5 million dollars sounds like a lot. When you do infrastructure, it's a drop in the bucket, especially downtown because so much of the infrastructure is old. There's water main issues. Noel mentioned it, but I don't know that people understand what it is about, what is it called? Under the sidewalks?
The conduit?
No, the vaults.
Oh, the vaults? Yeah.
Some of you may not even know we have them, but can you explain what they are?
Yeah, so basically, it's the, in the old days, the delivery system for the coal or wood that would power the furnace for the buildings. So the delivery would come and dump the coal into the vault in the sidewalk, and it would go into the basement where the furnace was. People didn't haul that stuff down the stairs, it got dumped into the vault. I wasn't here then, just for the record. Close, but not quite. But it got delivered directly into those vaults. So it's basically like a chute from the public sidewalk that goes down into the basement of a building. And I know Alderman Donenworth has seen them before in his experience as a police officer here. So there were some places in downtown where, for example, during the renovation of the Genesee Theater, there was a surprise that there were some vaults there, and so some of them were filled in or otherwise structurally improved to hold up the sidewalk. When the Karcher Building was redone, there was an issue with vaults in that sidewalk, and so those were repaired during that renovation process and when we replaced sidewalks there. So there may be some that we don't know about, there may be some that have been repaired in some way that need addressing. And that's another challenge with grants. When you know it's likely that you're going to have some surprises when you get into a project, that can be really challenging in managing a grant where you've laid out what exactly the costs are in your budget. So having the local funding for a project like that gives us some flexibility to react to what we find underground as we find it.
There's not a lot of Lake County communities that have those. So you need to, Alderman Felix?
One thing that I wanted to bring up is, Mayor mentioned that, yeah, the 5.5 is not a lot of money, and, you know, if we sink it into the downtown, which it's a, it is a good idea, we need businesses to go downtown, but I don't think it's going to go as far as doing other things. Things that I wanted to bring up to use with that money is that, what are the small-cost, huge-impact things that we can do in the city? Like lighting up certain areas where current businesses are, and then making sure at least we protect those small businesses that are in the city, like the Washington Corridor, other areas where, you know, we see a lot of the homeless. So I think that maybe looking into those areas where, let's have Waukegan feel safe for businesses to start coming into our city. Because when I hear people talk about coming into the city for business, they don't really talk about the, you know, the sidewalk and whatnot. They're looking at, well, is it safe? Is it easy to start my business there? And those are the things that are, you know, impacting, in my, in my observation, bringing businesses in. So one thing that I wanted to bring up, maybe we can do a study of our process in terms of how businesses come in, how their intake, being, you know, do the intake process and, you know, how long it takes. I think that's one of the biggest things that I would like to invest in is do a study on how to improve our process to come into the city to do business, and also light it up, you know, like, light up our areas where people feel unsafe.
Part of that is what we're talking about, needing to do conduit because in a lot of our downtown areas, we just don't have the ability. I know we lost a light pole out here about a couple of months ago, and if you saw, the electrical wires were sticking out. We don't have things in conduit. Like, in other parts of the city, we do, but we don't here and in the downtown area. There is a lot of noise going on, there are protesters outside, so just know that that's, that's the noise. that's the noise you're hearing.
Mayor, if I could maybe add to your comments, in terms of the Genesee Street project, one of the goals with improving the electrical system there would be to equip all of the light poles to be enabled to have cameras so that the police department would have the ability to add cameras where they're needed and where they're most effective over time without having to then, with the camera installation, do the additional electrical work and dig things up and all of that. So that's, that's definitely an improvement that would be ancillary to the actual sidewalk. In terms of the, the business stuff, Alderman Felix, I'd be glad to sit down and talk to you about that. In my experience, our biggest challenge with getting business licenses approved in a timely manner is when people don't put the, the information that's necessary in their applications. And then when we request follow-up information from them, that they take a really long time to respond to that.
I did want to mention regarding that, I do believe that is true. But I've been following at least a few businesses when they start from start to finish. Sometimes even having reference documents of knowing the whole process from our team members is where it causes a lot of, you know, time to, to, to be wasted because they don't know the whole process. So I can say, I need something, I need this, and, and then they do it, then a week later, okay, now I need this. Instead of knowing the whole process, having everything ready.
Understood.
And I brought those things up. That's what I kind of want to look into, see what the gaps are, that way it doesn't happen. Because in terms of having the, the ability to just respond in our system, we have that, which is good, but there's more that is needed there.
Absolutely, I completely concur. My team's working on how to improve the information on our website so that it's really accessible to people 24 hours a day. We've talked with Lake County Community Foundation about their work with businesses and how they are interacting with the city with regard to establishing or growing a business. So we're getting some feedback from them on that, and we're definitely trying to improve that information. With that particular issue about finding out a step down the line that there's something else needed, usually that's when things transition from one department to another. So as a reviewer, I may not know that something else is going to be needed three departments later. It won't be till it gets to that department that it's known. But we'll be working with all of the other departments to provide more upfront information about the requirements and the process from all the different departments at the front end. And would be glad to have, have your input on that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure how, what the money looks like, but I'm pretty sure something that we can put money towards investigating who has the best process and, you know, we can put some of this money in there, and it would probably have a huge impact in terms of businesses coming in into our, into our, you know, and that's something that I would like to, you know, use the money for. And we're talking about the 1.8 million that we're going to lose, you know, we're bringing in more business by doing this. I think that'd be a good, good thing that we can do.
We won't bring in 1.8 million, but, I mean, it's something that absolutely, we're always fine tuning the processes. As a matter of fact, one of the biggest problems we've had is that we always used to just require, like, the contractor coming for the permit, and we would just take that information and forward the information to that person. And we found out we need the owner's name as well because the contractor wasn't checking the site, and the owner wasn't getting the information that they knew that there was a problem.
In our Chicago, they actually make the owners get the permit first.
Yeah.
You can look into that.
I'm, I'm not ruling that out. Alderman Hayes?
In the egg type scenario, I happen to be a, a big fan of just investing in our infrastructure. It's something that everybody expects to already be in place, and no one knows it or appreciates it until it fails. So making sure that we stay ahead of that. I think the opportunity that we have on Genesee Street is one where we can, we can kind of get two for one. It's infrastructure, but it's also investment in the, the retail corridor. My personal opinion is if, if we want to convince other people to invest in downtown Waukegan, we have to take the first step, and we have to do it ourselves. We have to demonstrate for them that we believe in revitalizing the city, and by doing that, we can sink, I guess, you know, we're talking about a certain sum of money now, but have a plan and start to, start to take that first step right away. They're already expecting streetlights to work. They're already expecting to not have electrical fires because everything should be in conduit. They're not expecting to have customers trip on sidewalks when they go to walk in their shops. These are basic, basic functions that I think we have to take the first step, make those improvements, show our current owners and our prospective owners that we're willing to invest in the city and that, that we believe in it. And like I said, these are basic functions that anybody expects in a retail corridor. So if we want to be taken seriously, I think we have to spend serious money to make those improvements now. I can certainly be persuaded otherwise, there's a lot of areas of the city that need some investment, but I think that is a real opportunity for us to take a giant step forward. I think the city council's done a really good job of exercising discipline. This money has been collecting in our accounts, and we have not rushed to spend it. We've been really thoughtful about it, we've had a lot of discussion, but I, I think that's our, that's a real opportunity to do infrastructure and beautification for the city at the exact same time.
Okay, Alderman Turner?
Thank you. Alderman Hayes raises some good points, but I'd also point out that we actually did take first steps a long time ago. We renovated the Genesee Theater, we tore down that Madison Theater, the other theater. We built the Academy, thank you. We have the brand new empty building that's been empty since it was built at that spot now where the Academy Theater was. We've got the parking garage, we've got the space where the night shade and dark is and where the juice, juice bar is. So here's all, and we've got the new sidewalks that now need to be replaced, lighting, new light poles were put in down here. So we've already made some significant investments downtown on Genesee Street. And, you know, I talked to a lot of, and I mean a lot of business owners and developers, and nobody is talking about coming downtown Genesee, the, Genesee Street, or, or not wanting to come down because sidewalks are bad or infrastructure doesn't exist. The consistent complaint is that there's no, there's not enough foot traffic, and parking is, is a real problem. We've talked about parking before, maybe going to two hour parking, some getting rid of those meters, but nobody's expressed any concerns to me. And again, I'd speak to a lot of folk, particularly about Genesee Street, and no one's complained about infrastructure. So having said that, I wanted just to shift and just give you something to think about. For years, folk have been talking about redevelopment, development on Genesee Street, redevelop downtown, et cetera, et cetera. Well, every project starts with an idea, and it evolves into a plan. And part of that planning process is to set a goal. Why do you want to redevelop Genesee Street? What's the ultimate goal? Well, you might say, you might say, well, the city wants to redevelop it so that there will be businesses down there, so the city will gain revenue. Then you have to ask your questions. Well, how much business do you need? How many people do you need? How much revenue do you need? How are you going to set measurable goals to, to justify your project and your investment? So, that being said, just as a thought, something for you to think about, my preference would be to spend money repairing or replacing those sidewalks. They are a hazard. And then I would ask or suggest that we put the remaining monies into the road infrastructure out in the wards. Many of our surface streets and side streets are severely deteriorated in many of our wards, and those are the things that I think should be prioritized.
Alderman Florian?
I agree that the sidewalks are an issue downtown, as Alderman Turner just pointed out, but there's no sense in addressing the sidewalks if we don't address what's underneath there. Because infrastructure isn't talked about until it fails. You don't talk about a bridge you drive over every day until you go to drive over it and it collapsed the night before. So we need to, that infrastructure, like Noel said, we don't even know what's under there. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, we should do it right for once. Waukegan tends, correct me if I'm wrong, Noel, to look at the surface, right? Let's just make it look pretty and not worry about what, let's do it right this time. Let's start block by block, address the infrastructure, get it looking nice, then people will want to have their business down there. Then there'll be foot traffic because they'll hear, oh, there's a new restaurant, or, or oh, there's a new this. You, you have to start somewhere, and I think this is the place to start. I think our downtown, if you look at it like a house, you know, kind of the kitchen is kind of the heart of the home usually, that's where people tend to gather and, and, and congregate when you have a gathering at your home. Our downtown is like the heart of our city. I just spoke to a resident the other night who said, you know, I can go to Kenosha, and there's a downtown. I can go to Aniok, and there's a downtown. I can go to Libertyville, and there's a downtown. Waukegan just doesn't have that yet, but this could be the beginning of that. And, and if we're gonna do it, we should do it right. We shouldn't just do the surface, we should get underneath and make it right so everything functions for the future.
Can I just say something?
Alderman Martinez?
I'm sorry. One thing I think we need to invest on is, is trying to get foot traffic downtown because we can have all these things, new change and all that, but if we don't have the people to actually go down there to spend money or to invest in our city, it'll just be another pretty picture with no, with no foot traffic, you know? So I think we need to invest in, in something as that. Or are we, is there no, we can invest the money to try to build income on it? Are we in a hurry to get rid of it, or, I mean, because we all have all these ideas what to do with it, but if we're in no hurry, why can't we invest in and try to make more money out of it?
That's an option. I mean, the hard part is, I've been getting from all of you, I proposed this in August of '23, what did you want to do with this? And everybody said, well, I need to go and get ideas for my ward. We are now in October of '24, and I really haven't heard anything. So these were just some of the ideas that I threw out. I would like you guys to have conversations with department heads and talk about the feasibility of some of these things because it's really nice to talk up here about something, but how would that be implemented? What, would that look like? Again, I understand what you're saying, Alderman Turner, but you cannot just repave a sidewalk or re-brick it, and then you're going to have a water main problem. I mean, we have a lot of water main issues in this city that need to be addressed.
Well, and I was thinking about that too, Mayor, and thank you for mentioning, because, you know, rather than digging up the entire sidewalk or, or the street even, you can bring in ground penetrating radar and just walk, basically walk a cart down the street, and it tells you what's empty, you know, where the empty spots are and that kind of thing. There's technology for that without...
Some degree. Some of our infrastructure is so old, like, it's not picked up. So I just want to be sure that, in fairness, most of the infrastructure that is the oldest is in downtown. I mean, it's just the reality. That and the first ward. But the first ward right now, we just don't have the business foot traffic that could be there. Right now, you do have the courthouse, you do have businesses here that would like to be here. So that was the only reason. But like, again, there's nothing in stone here. Alderman Bolton?
Yeah, I just want to validate your point. I've taken time with Noel and, and some developers, I think there was 12 of them, that look to invest in our downtown, which I believe also influenced Alderman Felix Ward. So I want to openly tell you thank you, because I do take the time to come in here with our department heads and take the time and let this, and we talk. So thank you.
Joining us. Mayor, may I respond to Alderman Martinez? Couple of things. We do make investments. We have a council-approved investment policy, and our treasurer's office takes any lump sum of cash and invests it for the necessary timeframe. They look at our bill payment schedule and try to make sure that we have as much money invested as possible in maximizing those revenues while keeping us, excuse me, as liquid as possible to pay all of our bills. So they do a great job of that. Multiple times a month, they're making and improving investments. So we are investing money, and the, the investment policy is a council-approved policy. And I'm sure Dr. Schwab or Deputy Treasurer Joan Westfall would be glad to talk about how they do that and how often and all of that. They're much more skilled and knowledgeable about it than I am, but I know that they're doing that. In terms of increasing foot traffic downtown, I'm glad to hear a couple of you mention that because I will be coming to you possibly at the next council meeting for approval of a contract with a consultant, a development advisor, to work with us on the Washington and Sheridan Block to put it out to the development market in a really, really strong and attractive way. So I'll have that in front of you, hopefully at the next finance committee meeting.
We are pushing for development. There's a lot going on. Alderman Felix?
Another idea that I wanted to throw out there, this is something that Alderman Guzman has mentioned, is investing also, we can invest this money into starting to sell water to other cities, utilizing our, our water here, our water system to, I guess, to connect to somewhere and, and offer more water to other cities. That's, that's, that'd be a good investment, I think.
I think we already invested.
Yeah.
Pretty done.
Yeah, yeah. We're still not quite ready yet, but it is something that, yes, we are still looking at. One of the things that we're having a lot of people come for right now is data centers, which require a large amount of water, which is a big jackpot for us.
I, I did, I, when we went to the conferences, I did speak to some people. You don't have to go crazy and like, you can, we can start doing it already. It doesn't take a long, we can start already doing it and investing in it, but we, we don't, we don't have to wait to start selling to other cities. We can start doing a little bit now.
We do have some existing water customers that have been our customers for decades and decades and decades. You know, Park City is one, Beach Park is one, Green Oaks is one. So we've been doing that, and we've been looking at expanding our infrastructure, our investments in the plant that we've been doing for a number of years now. We started looking at, at expanding our water service back in, I want to say, 2012 or '13, when the Western communities in Lake County appealed for a Lake, Lake Michigan water allocation. So once they got approval for the Lake Michigan water allocation, they started talking to us and Lake County Public Works and CLC Jawa, the Joint Action Water Agency, the, the folks with the water plants that could provide the water, to see what could be done. So those conversations have been happening, and we realized as part of that, we needed to make some investments in our water plant, which we've been doing, but I'll let Antonio talk to what other investments need to be made. But it's, that is definitely a priority for a group of staff, my team included.
I do want to mention, again, that's something that Alderman Guzman has been looking into or liked the idea, so I just wanted to bring it up as well. I mean, that's something that we are discussing also or looking into as well.
Yes, we also had a water model done by CMT, Crawford, Murphy and Tilly, and they came up with, it's like $60 million worth of improvements to get started on selling water out west. We need a new storage tank, elevated storage tank, and we need to upgrade our water mains. That's the main, main thing, and that's what we're doing now with the city engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom?
I just wanted to say that that speaks to the infrastructure. You got to have stuff in place. For years, we didn't do anything with the water plant, and then when people talk about wanting to sell water, well, we didn't have the infrastructure in place to even think about doing anything. So now that we're working on doing that, we can think about in the future, selling water way out west. And it's the same thing for the downtown. If you open up something, you're going to find something that you have placed a brick over or some paint over and just close your eyes to it for so many years, and then when you really want to do something, that thing going to cave in on you. So you got to think about the infrastructure if you're talking about building. You got to start with the foundation first, if you're going to build upon it.
Also, if I can, yeah, in order to do that, I think we should hire a consultant, a professional that knows exactly what needs to be done and what is needed to, you know, to, to create these different projects. So hiring, hiring a consultant is one big thing that we can also do to, to let them, you know, to give us the, the advice that we need, professionals that we need to get these projects done.
Yeah, we certainly, all the departments use consultants where their expertise exceeds ours, and you've seen the water plant do that for a number of projects there, as does my department. Engineering and Public Works hire outside engineers to help move projects that we just don't have the internal staff capacity to advance on the timeline that we need to move them.
You always want to stick with an expert that knows what they're doing.
Okay, how about we do this? Whatever project you're interested in is, if you're interested in water, or if you're interested in something else, I'd like you to meet with... in water, or if you're interested in something else, I'd like you to meet with the department head and get numbers of what you think that project will cost. Because right now, you're talking five and a half million. I think you're going to find that a lot of those numbers are going to be a lot bigger than what you think. But because those conversations have not happened, I'm going to ask you that we will come back to this in a month. And I want you to kind of go and talk to the department heads and have those discussions, rather than us sitting up here going over and over and over this. Because if we're going to have some productive conversations, we need to know costs. We can't just throw things out. So the department heads will work through that with you, and they'll answer those questions for you. Because then, when you know the costs of some of these, that might influence which way you want to go. So I'm going to, like I said, I'm going to give you a month to do it, because I know not everybody can come in in two weeks. So let's set that up. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. We're going to start precisely at 7:00 PM tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.